Okay. Friday. Uh, is it time then?
Yes.
I want to welcome everybody who's here in person and all who might be joining us on our Zoom. Our first, well, I guess Peaceworks first hybrid and Sierra Club did one week or two ago. So I'm getting used to a new era with different ways of doing things. Uh, I want to welcome you on behalf of, uh, well, first off, let me thank, I want to thank you for being here. And I want to thank all of the candidates who've come out. We basically have all the City Council candidates now, uh, were with us tonight. Um, Ray British and Don Waterman are running in the Good Award. And Nick from New, can you say your name?
No.
No, he is, uh, running in the first ward. As you all probably know, Pat Fowler had been running in the first ward since he incumbent, but she's made a decision not to, uh, not to run this time. So Nick Worthy, our next first ward City Council person, who already some active, uh, it's unexpected. But, um, really glad that these agreed to come and share his thoughts on these issues as well. Uh, I want to thank all six organizations that are co-sponsoring this event. That consists of Climate Lobbying Columbia, Climate Leaders at the Zoo, Local Motion, Forum of the Parliament Coalition, uh, Mid Missouri Sierra Club, Mid Missouri Peaceworks, and New Year Missouri. And so really pleased to have you all here tonight and have all candidates here and organizations working together to create a future for Columbia and for humanity in general. So.
Sorry.
Okay, was that?
I like it.
I keep going here. Okay, basic round rules for tonight are pretty simple. Uh, we're going to ask people to come up and stand on this side of the speaker without in front of it, so I don't get feedback. Ask the question.
It's done now.
But once they ask the questions, uh, both Abby and Nicole are sharing role timekeeper. And our question will have a specific amount of time, some of the three minutes, some are two minutes, there's a couple of shorter ones that doesn't make it back. They'll indicate how much they are and then they'll keep time. Uh, and you all were giving an answer, we'll see signs go on and say, two minutes, ninety seconds, one minute, thirty seconds, stop. We would appreciate when it comes up to stop, that you, if you, you don't have to stop in the middle of a sentence, but you'll make a whole another couple of paragraphs. Okay? Sorry. That's how we're gonna do that. Uh, before we get started, does anybody have any questions about what we're doing? Okay, seeing done, I am going to invite Nicole to come up and ask the first question. Grab the mic here and then stand on the other side.
Good evening. I'm Nicole and.
My whole mind is closed.
Closer.
Yes.
Perfect. Everybody here. Awesome. Okay. So there is consensus among scientists worldwide.
There you.
Okay. There is consensus among scientists worldwide that global warming will be limited to 1.5 degrees Celsius. To do this, humanity must dramatically reduce greenhouse gas pollution by 2030. The City Council adopted the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, CAAP, in June 2019 as a response to the climate crisis. Are you familiar with the CAAP and do you generally support its implementation? What are your ideas for moving and implementing it forward more rapidly? And what do you view as top priorities for near term implementation? We have three minutes.
All right. Yes, that'd be great. Right now.
Uh, very good. Hi, uh, thank you to the Sierra Club and Columbia Office here. Sierra Club's already celebrating 130 years this year, so well done. Um, I am familiar with the CAAP. I mean, and I see the CAAP as an investment in our community. Not only is it gonna provide a better future in their area, respiratory problems for children and everyone, but it's also been able to improve the quality of life in our community. Part of how to do that is including energy efficiency. And efficiency of vehicle traffic, which saves time, saves money, less commuting. Including stormwater management, these people's homes and properties are flooding, which is something that I hear as I tour around the, uh, we did work. In addition, we'll also increase litterability, bikeability, uh, create safety for young people in our communities. So emissions per capita has been going, has been going, uh, uh, has been going down even as our population increases. And we are expected to be 150,000 people strong, uh, in the next 10 years with a current population of, uh, just over 1.3%. Uh, there's the, the 90 guys, right, that's the performance indicators by, they're even exceeding the targets for, uh, young 30. Uh, there's four that are, uh, remaining. Ninety seconds. All right, gotcha. Uh, of those, the four that are remaining, two are still outside of 3%. I guess I'm telling you everything that you already know about this. So what are my ideas? One is we've got to decrease the amount of electricity. Uh, we do that through efficiency, we do that through smart building, we do that through creating sustainable neighborhoods. Uh, and streets that are safer for all different nodes of traffic, uh, including fighting, walking, uh, people that are confined to a wheelchair. We have to make sure that we create neighborhoods and create our community that, uh, that allows everyone along those lines to have access to getting to their dorms, getting their family, getting their groceries, or getting their groceries delivered, right? So another aspect of this course is recycling, right? Getting back into what I call the reclamation stream. Uh, we'll speak on that a little bit more, but, uh, I think why we had a nice amount of those goals is the pandemic took a lot of wind out of our sails. Three years ago, there hasn't been a lot done. So, uh, to sum up, uh, we've got to increase emissions. Anything that we do and add in terms of production capacity must not be strictly fossil fuel and must be something that will.
Thank you, Ray.
The microphone seems to work best when you have it like right in front of your mouth.
I'll be back.
We do have to keep on advancing because our hair bashes up again.
All right, good evening. Thank you all, thanks too to the Sierra Club for the opportunity to be here and organizations that are working with it as well. So to address the initial part of the question is I do support doing everything we can to curb emissions. I think we should be working to try and do what we can for renewables. But to mandate, if you will, that we be there by 2030, 100% by 2030, I think is, so as I said, it's ambitious. It is, it's definitely ambitious. Um, but I still have some concerns about what, at what cost is that going to generate for us? Implementing these standards, building standards, it's going to cost, going during cost, unfortunately. So there's going to be an increase in regulations and associated costs. I, as I said, I definitely believe that we could do better, whether it's our transportation. Uh, there's questions that come up about roads and how we can work with those. And we've had bike lanes for years, very rarely see anybody using them, uh, even downtown. But the more that we can encourage, the better. Uh, walking, not only is, is it green, but it's healthy, same thing with bike. So there's a lot of things that we could do. Recycling, yes, if there's something that would be encouraged. Um, frankly, I would like to see the election move back to week as it used to be. Uh, that would be something that would help encourage it, making it bi-weekly the way it is now, just, um, sometimes make it easier, I think, for people just to toss something in the trash rather than recycling. So the recycling center, uh, I know we've got friends, they're not in fifth ward, but they're in Southwest Columbia. And to the best of my knowledge, and theirs, there's no recycling center where you can drop off your boxes and your, uh, other recyclable materials into the pool. Pickups choose to do that. So making those and then working with those to get that better, the more often, uh, more frequently, uh, they tend to look. They can get unsightly, so we need to promote it and make sure that it's a good place to visit. So again, I think that we can do a lot and we should be working toward it. Everything helps. That's where I'll, where I'll leave it. Thanks.
And thank you, Don and Nick.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, as you said, I'm Nick the Note, I'm, uh, I'm so candid, most hard, I'm the Brooklyn Council C. Uh, to answer this question, um, yes, I am fully a supporter, a favor of the path that has been mentioned. It was passed and signed into law summer of 2019, so we had less than a year between that happening and COVID hitting, uh, to really get our feet under us and start, uh, working with. Uh, but something I want to stress is my belief that our climate goals shouldn't be a part of our everyday life in terms of how to be operated. It shouldn't be this third party thing that we look at and consider when we feel like it's relevant to our mission or to a project or to win initiative. Uh, it should be a part of doing business and should just be a part of every day, uh, again, in our life and how the city operates, what we prioritize, uh, and the way we move. The city has done a great job in the new bars in moving forward to the path. Uh, you know, we are a leader, not only in the state, uh, but also nationally, on a lot of the actions we're taking around the climate, you know, we were the first nationwide to establish a sustainability goals. Uh, and we have, I would argue, the best typically office in the state, uh, level of politics, uh, in some degree in the Midwest, I'm sure. Uh, and so it's really just doubling down, I mean, and not making excuses, right? Things always going to be difficult, it's always going to cost money. And are we going to accomplish all the goals by 2030? Objectively, probably not, right? But it's definitely not going to happen if we don't commit to it, if we don't work towards it. Uh, and that, that is my conclusion that, yes, I support it and it just, it needs to become a part of how we operate every day and every, in every department and every initiative. Uh, it is too significant not to be incorporated into how we operate.
Thank you, Nick. Best, Carolyn Hopper, the Sierra Club, come up, ask twice, you know them too.
Okay, guys, address this a little bit, maybe give you a chance to, Margaret. As you likely know, the consultant seems in their report to the Integrated Electric Resource and Master Planner, laid out scenarios to take Columbia water and light to 100% renewablely generated power by either 2030, 2040, or 2050. Only the former, 2030, however, would allow us to meet United Nations ITCC and United States goals of reducing our carbon footprint by half by 2030. The City Council has authorized a more detailed study by the Energy Authority that will provide more detailed information regarding achieving the 2030 target. The study results will be available in two due 2023. Would you support this target date? If not, do you see another path to achieving the needed emissions reductions? You have a minute and a half for your response.
Thank you. The original seat AAP or cap, as it was, uh, voted in, signed in, mayor's recycle. One of the things that is, section two says that this resolution is advisory but not regulatory. And yet, conversations here and questions is seem to be going in that direction. I know there was a notice or not notice, but a comment in the 2021 update that, or status report, that, uh, there was apparently wanted to try and move it to where it was more regulatory. Uh, I don't know the net, but I think it's the council, I don't know if that fit up through. Generally, I want to see what the report says, but as I said earlier, I think that there is more that we can do, that we could definitely make consideration in what we do. But I think that I want to be a little more, I would say skeptical and be a little more moderate and careful as we move forward. Again, I think there's some unintended consequences if we rush into this.
Great.
So I'm an ambitious person and this is an ambitious goal. But I also believe that Columbia is an ambitious town. I want to learn more from this study, from the Energy Authority, if it becomes available. Uh, I believe that there's any brains that can make it work, Columbia is in that place. We need to make sure that we create a future better for our descendants. We need to make sure that we create a future that is sustainable and affordable. The reality is that we have a long way to go. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, we have a long way to go. And as of 2021, 15% of the city's power is renewablely generated. Seems to be a pattern as we go. We're promising and under the the most the asset for the in action. That is something that's not acceptable.
And Nick for sure.
So to bring to compare, there's, uh, we were trying to solve something every day, every week, every month, every person and are actively damaging to our, our children. Uh, as far as I care, there's only one earth. Earth. We can be ambitious changes.
Me by the Thompson. Am I saying it right? We have greens, please, with climate leaders at the zoo or clam. So come on up here, Sophie. Thank you.
Of course. Not a problem. Happy to be here. All right, for your third question, Columbia Water and Light is preparing for a rate hike that is expected to be enacted later this well, see rates increase, increasing costs of fuel equipment. So CW and L charges residential customers to separate charging. A customer charge that is the same for all, regardless of how much power they consume, and an energy charge that's based upon how many kilowatt hours they consume. Currently, the customer charge is $16.31 a month. And they are proposing to raise this to $22, an increase of 34.9%. By opting to get needed revenue by raising this customer charge, there is less incentive for customers to reduce their consumption compared to a rate structure that minimizes customer charges and instead increases energy charges. The residential energy rates from CW and L currently have a big rate incline as bigger users pay a little more per kilowatt hour than smaller users. The proposed rate structure, however, would flatten rates and thus it also reduces the incentives to get more efficient and use less. Under the proposed system, a very small user consuming, say, 200 kilowatt hours a month would see a 23.6 increase in their bills, while an average user consuming 600 kilowatt hours a month would see just a 14.4% increase. And a larger user consuming 1,200 kilowatt hours a month in winter would pay just 8.9% more than they currently do. If elected to the City Council, would you support or oppose raising the customer charge? Likewise, would you support flattening the rates or would you support maintaining an inclining law that charges a bit more per kilowatt hour for large users? What is your philosophy on setting rates? You have two minutes.
Well, great. So, uh, my teenager's notwithstanding, um, I try to shut off lights in my house. I think all of us have had children at home, maybe, uh, do that. Uh, but increasing, more to the point, increasing the base rate. It disproportionately like we, like the question five, it affects, uh, lower income members of the community, including small households such as CD, that don't consume as much electricity as others. So increasing the base rate rather than using a tiered structure based on consumption is counter to the goal of overall reduction per capita energy consumption, which the city has committed itself. Now, as of 2021, there are well found and much for this, uh, next, uh, assess or assess incentives and reduce energy consumption. Let's make that a policy, the number of users that are doing that, let's make that go. Do that in education. And let's do that through incentivizing, again, keep increasing the demand. Uh, if you need some help shutting off lights in your house, I'm really good at it.
Thank you, Ray and Don.
Thank you. The rate structure, as it starts out, nobody likes to see rate increases, but they're going to be a fact of life, they're going, we're going to have them, um, regardless of how we generate our electricity. I do think, yes, we could be more concerned, should hope that. Um, I played around with this a little bit, that spreadsheet, I played around with it a little bit. And yes, there is incremental increase. And with the water and light recommendation, you start with the small user that they recommend, the 200 kilowatts would pay X amount, essentially double that up to the 600 and triple that up to the large user, the 1,200. Regardless of whether it's under the current structure or whether it's under the new structure. So there's not, so again, a large user, any large user is going to be looking for a way to become more efficient, that should be. Yeah, so I think that's something, and it's just, it's education, it's smart business. Um, because if any way that you can reduce expenses and electrical expenses, then it's going to be played out to the bottom line. Smart business. So I, I would say I'm going to go with this, let's go with the CW and L recommendation as a start.
Thank you, Don.
So the way I do this is very much through a kind of carrot stick approach, which is how often how, uh, our local policies are evolved and developed. And that's no different for our land, for our efforts. And clearly the stick here is you pay more when you use more of our electricity or of our resources. And I think it should say that we should have from the progressive system in which, uh, the more you use, uh, the more you pay. Uh, and for nothing else to incentivize, again, that, uh, conservation of resource. Um, and it's frankly, just at the end of the day, it's, uh, not only an equitable and unjust, uh, but it just doesn't make sense to put the, the highest percentage of an increase on those who can bear it at least and are contributing, uh, at least to the problem of our energy resources.
Thank you, Nick. For our next, um, question, actually, next two questions, we're going to ask Ashley Peabody, Local Motion, come up here. He's got question four, had a question five, one at a time.
Okay.
Uh, you're gonna do the first question.
All right, that'll, so, uh, first question that I have here is transportation accounts for a significant portion of our carbon footprint. The provision of easily accessible, affordable, and convenient public transit is also a matter of social equity. What policies would you suggest to increase the use of public transit, walking and cycling, reduce the use of fossil fuels, and promote the transition to electric vehicles? You have three minutes.
Thank you. Couple of questions about public transit systems to be dead with. I know that's, it's, it's a concern. Um, how do people get around when you choose to or don't have a car? How do they get around? And it's kind of a, what do you want to say, carrot stick? Um, but making it usable, uh, it's one of those, when the ridership is not there, then it's making it easier to justify cutting routes, cutting times and so on. And yet that is counterproductive to making it usable, accessible for people that need it. So how do we get around that? Uh, the other question that I've got, somebody will probably tell me here shortly. What is the general ridership? What is the largest number of seats taken up on any route at any time? Uh, what's the average number? Uh, could we maybe go to a smaller, smaller buses? Uh, then with whatever savings we have there, that maybe generate, uh, more routes. Another idea, this is just strictly a throw it up against a wall and see if it sticks idea, but maybe more of an on demand kind of than, you want to use a term Uber or Lyft, uh, structure to where if somebody needed a ride at a certain time, um, call for it, it'd be a next station at whatever time, and it'd be there, get picked up, uh, to take, and take in where you need to go. So I guess throwing against the wall and see if it sticks, rather than buses that are assigned specific routes at a specific time. It may be up as much as 90 minutes apart. I've lived in a community many years ago, I lived in Washington DC, and I was actually going to school there, University District of Columbia. I went for a year and a half, never drove campus. There was a bus station on the corner that I could catch bus, get subway, and there was a subway stop within a block of either one of the campuses that I was going to. It was handy, it was convenient, yes, didn't have to worry about driving. Yeah, I knew that there was going to be a bus and regular schedule and a time for me to be there. Right now, I don't know that we've got the demand to be here before, before that. The other option, and it's maybe a little cynical, if you want to use that term, is instead of putting money into updating our roads, we put that money directly into public transportation. Basically make it easier to take public transportation than to drive it itself. So a couple of ideas, uh, but I do think that, yes, there are people here in town that need a public transportation system. And so let's see what we can do about creating that. But by the same token, just simply expanding what we currently have is very expensive. And Columbia already has a number of challenges with, as it's, with its budget and as it is.
Thanks, Don. Great. Uh, Columbia is growing.
And you can just start investing in amenities that people expect out of a larger city. The reality is that as bus routes are getting cut, it's because of a labor shortage, not because of the demand shortage. So a robust transit system can benefit everyone. It will make events in our city easier to access by eliminating people's concerns for, for parking, for driving, decreasing traffic. It will allow for adolescents to engage in productive activities while their parents are working. It will allow individuals of all ability to be engaged in the public sphere. It will help employers and outsiders. Uh, outside, forgive me, outside of our city for the core and attract and provide for the workers that they desperately need right now. So currently, 70% of residents are committing to work. This creates traffic, traffic prolongs, commute times increases the burning of fossil fuel, the increased pollution, and respiratory illnesses, particularly among children and CD. I was a four season biker in the South. Uh, I would tell people that you can bike on ice, you just can't turn or stop. As a driver's skill, you can keep going forward and hope that you get to that next piece of pavement. And I saw firsthand about the importance of roads designed for safety to accommodate all different modes of transportation. Having roads that allow for equal access by cars, by wheelchair, pedestrians, transit riders is a matter of public safety. A road should be designed to people, not vehicle. There are many reasons that an individual may not have access to, such as finances, age, disability. And our streets need to be safe for everyone, regardless of their ability to access a vehicle. This is a crushing, public safety issue that we started investing in our city. Besting in our city to make it look like a real one first century city.
Thank you, Ray. And Nick, your turn.
I love this topic because it touches on everything. If we have a robust public transit system, that improves access to affordable housing, it improves workforce development, it improves economic If we have a robust public transit system, that improves access to affordable housing, it improves workforce development, it improves economic mobility. But at the end of the day, and as Greg has already touched on, we currently have a lot of issues, but one of which is workforce for the city that we don't have enough drivers for a variety of reasons, paying being amongst the top of it, I'm sure. But there's so many issues with our transit system, one, and I've said this in past forums, and I don't mind keeping saying it, our transit system has just been set up to fail, right? We have stops that are timing too far apart to be actually efficient for those who want to use it for everything. We have so many private bus services in town for all the student housing complexes all over town. And there was an effort years ago by the city to work with the university to frankly get rid of that and have all students just use the public transit system therein, you know, helping fund it and making more routes available more frequently, and we all benefit from that. That should be revisited. We don't need so many separate private bus services at the end of the day, serving all these student housing complexes all over town. For bus and free to use as long as we can, public transit system that is reliable, that is safe to use, and that is frequently available. It's not just about having a man hours and serving this around, it's about being able to expand it, being able to make it actually usable for those who are trying to get to work, get to school, pick up their kids, whatever it may be. And we have great bus drivers now who are incredibly overworked and had mandatory overtime for too long. And as Greg already said, that's one of the reasons why the current change has been implemented. As for bike and pedestrian, you know, that is really about safety, right? It's about having street lights, about having dedicated walkways, dedicated bike path that we don't have, I mean, if you go down major thoroughfares in the city, in the first world, for example, you go down Ash or Whorley or Broadway, there's not one sidewalk that's from one end to the other, you have to crisscross, and it's not safe to do so. Same thing for bike lanes, they just arbitrarily stop, and maybe if you're on the other side, I have to go down the road. It's about whether it's, whether it's transit or being on foot or by, it's about safety, it's about investing in it, because that's what it is, both of them, an investment in our community, whether it's climate or housing or workforce or economic mobility, giving people a chance to access jobs they couldn't otherwise without that public transit. I love this topic, like I said, because it touches on all these things, it is so fundamentally important. Mobility should be a right, a right to mobility and to be able to get where you need to go. And the city has a long way to go, but I don't think there's anything stopping us from doing it other than ourselves.
Thank you, Nick. Then ask Ashley, come back up, Ashley, convert the local motion and go ask question number five.
All right, so question number five. As Columbia grows and size and population, it becomes increasingly important to plan along with Boone County for development and land use management. Land use management is important for both adaptation to and mitigation of climate change impacts. Columbia has east area and northeast area plans, but no plans for the west, south, or northern areas. Do you support developing area plans for these areas? How can Columbia be more proactive instead of reactive in matters of planning and annexation? Additionally, the unified development code could be amended to include more protective regulations for sensitive areas. Would you be likely to support science-based city regulation that would apply to any defined sensitive areas that are annexed?
Well, I have a science degree. I have a science degree. Nursing. Science works. Science gets better through use. Regarding science, we have an embarrassment of riches right here in our community of science. And that potential has not been properly encouraged or supported by unelected city leadership. It is important that we manage our sensitive areas responsibly. Otherwise, we may be faced with devastating and costly unintended consequences for the future or the future. Can't keep it down the road anymore. We are fortunate to be experiencing rapid growth when there's a wealth of local experts. It's important that we proactive foreseeing potential problems rather than reacting to unintended consequences. So what does that really look like, though? It looks like making sure that we have access to, to good electricity in our homes. So that we don't have brownouts and blackouts. We start planning five months, five years, five decades into the future, what things look like. That is what science can do. Again, like I said, we have an embarrassment of riches of people here in our community applying to help us. I want to harness their potential, harness their creativity, make sure that we continue to move Columbia to the one percent range. There's no need to make Columbia great again, go forward.
Thank you. The first part of the question about developing the area plan of the west, west, south, the northern areas. I think it's certainly something that we should be looking at. And again, consider, deliberate, and then take, and again, take a look at it and see if it's effective, if useful, if workable, if best for them, then yeah. And let's certainly see about adopting that. About the unified development codes, city regulations for areas that are annexed. For me, that's a case by case basis, each one is going to be a little bit different, each one is going to be, it's hard to put it. I don't want to say cookie cutter solution onto any area that we don't annex. Or because we just simply drive around Columbia, you'll see there's a variety of areas just outside of Columbia, and they're all different. So let's, again, case by case, yes, we'll take advantage of the experience, as Greg mentioned. Utilize those harness those. But just to say, put a stamp, cookie cutter stamp on regulations, no. It'll be as more of a case by case deliberate, deliberate to process.
Thank you, Dan.
So one of the things about this question is the inclusion of valley, because this really needs to be a city county effort. As the city continues to grow and subdues are built, and either before that or after that, they try to get annexed into the city. You know, to Greg's point, we need to have long-term planning effect. I do believe actually that there is a west area plan in development, but we need to do more, it's not, we have the habit of looking at, what is this subdivision with these fifty homes look like in terms of its impact to our environment, to our sewers, to our electricity? And not, okay, what is this subdivision and the thousand homes that we know are going to come after in the next twenty years look like to this, to the environment, right? Whether it's a creek or watershed, or whatever it may be. And that's something that we need to take, because those homes are going to be there that long, and they're going to have that long-term impact. We need to have, as a council, as a city, that long-term perspective of saying not just, what does it look like in the immediate aftermath during the construction, five years after these afterwards? What does it look like with this name, this year, a hundred years later? Because we have homes that are like that in the city, with the first awards, many of them. And, you know, we didn't have the forethought back then to do that, but we know now we should. And it's, it's incumbent upon us to ensure that we have those area plans, like west, south, whatever direction. Frankly, it should be a nice one, plenty wide, all of these cities working together, that would be most ideal in terms of protecting our, our home as a whole.
Thank you, Nick. On to our next question, I'm going to ask Lynn Mallie from Sierra Club to come up and ask question number six.
More housing in Columbia. And more compact and dense housing, important reach of goals. Would you support a process to require or require more density where appropriate, as many times are annexed in Columbia? Or available for meaning our ones own, or to require more cluster and smaller lots. The planning and building mission is not only working on cottage standards and a study on input of in a simple city to conduct and go without disrupting the community.
Thank you, Dan, your perspectives.
Thank you. I like the idea of the cottage standards. In fact, I think there was an article in yesterday or this morning in Missouri, and we wanted adjustment, we're simply approved developments utilizing the cottage standards. I think it's a great approach. It does provide for more density, it also provides for, I guess, a smaller house, but it is also means translates to more cost and an easier point of entry for those trying to get into, in the house. So I think it's a great way to address the housing situation of shortage and the begin to address the issue of affordable housing. So for that, but again, would I say that we should require it? No, but I think it should definitely be stronger than current.
Affordable housing is one of the pillars of my mind. Not just affordable housing in terms of how much it costs to buy, but also affordable and what it costs to maintain, and what it costs to equip electricity in terms of how much, just all the things that we associate with civilization. And increasing the housing supply through increased density and increasing cost through decreasing footprint will lead to making housing more affordable. Especially for those that are buying their first home, like I, my first home, and were one, my first home ever and were one over Columbia, and I moved here. Took a class from the city, and they were able to help me with the down payment, the city invested in me. And I hope that I have a return on that investment. Many of the people who come here, just like myself, are looking for a sense of community. A sense, a place to be able to live their most authentic self. And that's the Columbia that I see. Nevertheless, there's still some people who want to live a little bit further away. They want to have a little bit of distance, so. And I believe that there's smart zoning, not we're eliminating R one completely, but the smart zoning, we can actually make sure that their demands and their needs are met as well as that we still have the demands and needs for the rest of Columbia as well. I had a couple of conversations with individuals who had taught me as an eager pupil to them about cottage standards. There's some resistance to cottage standards because there's not protection in R one. There's something that's taking place. And I have to.
I'm fully, I believe, this new development or older, which is expressed in the board when we have the authority. But a lot of us do, there's some issues that are straight conscious of this, and they're wanting to move forward with ability for not only cops, but also others, I'll using a lot of coverage. Kill more on less time in terms of the effort, we also need to that's in the third world else. It's not only a, I'm aware, in terms of the watershed and runoff. There are no shortage issues already existing, again, in the first ward in particular regarding sewer and wastewater and law point in favor of the recent, and encouraging it, yeah, even incentivizing it. We need to be conscious that it doesn't come without its own challenges, not only for our environment, to the economics of the formal housing, let's say.
Next, Carolyn, I think, from Sierra Club, is number seven.
Okay, question number seven. Building codes that promote energy conservation for new residential and commercial construction are critical to achieving better energy efficiency for decades and even longer into the future. Columbia currently is using the twenty eighteen I E C C Energy Conservation Code. The twenty twenty one code addresses energy efficiency on several fronts, including cost, energy usage, use of natural resources, and the impact of energy usage on the environment. As a growing community, it is important that Columbia stay current as new energy conservation efficiencies become available. The twenty twenty one I E C C Energy Conservation Codes have not yet been approved. Over half of the existing housing units in Columbia are rental units. Many of these units have energy efficiency and weatherization issues, and many of the units occupants are energy burdened, meaning they spend too large of a share of their income on utility bills. Would you support implementing a policy of either mandatory energy scoring for rental units, mandatory minimum energy efficiency standards for rental units, or some combination of policies to improve energy efficiency of rental units in Columbia? Secondly, would you support implementing the twenty twenty one Energy Conservation Codes for new construction for fiscal year twenty twenty four? You have two minutes.
Thank you. Before I buy a, before I buy a, before I energy standards that are written right in either the showroom floor of its car, or right in the store itself on all of these appliances. I am informed of the energy cost. Home buyers receive estimates for their energy. They need to be able to receive estimates of energy cost before purchasing their homes. I know that we did. Energy scoring affords those who rent with the same kind of consumer information that many of us here kind of take for granted. We need educated consumers to be able to make informed choices and adopting new energy codes as an, is an investment in our community and into our future. I guess the question is, would, should it be mandatory or not? My heart tells me that we need to mandate businesses won't do things on their own just out of the goodness of their heart. We actually do need to mandate and say, look, here are the things that are the expectations when you come into our community and build. So it's important for governing bodies to have vision and set these kinds of goals that benefit not only the present generation, but future generations as well.
Thank you. I do believe that when it comes to the issue of energy scoring and knowing what your utility is going to be, as Greg said, when you buy a house, that information is provided, whether you read it or not, it's there. I think that the same thing should be required for rent, they should be able to, they shouldn't provide what the previous, the old books, utility bills of their water, etc., the whole. So you know whether that rental unit that you're looking at is efficient or not. So as far as for the new construction, yes, it's being constructed as a rental unit, I think we should do everything we can to make sure that it's as efficient as possible. Older units that need to be or should be upgraded, retrofitted. I will disagree with Greg on one point that he said the businesses won't do, I said mandated. They will. If it's, if it makes good business sense, they will. And if they're not getting the units rented because they're not upgrading them, they're not making them more efficient, and the unit down the street, next block, whatever, next neighborhood is, and that's where the people are going, then businesses will do it. Should it be strongly encouraged? Of course. The older units, yeah, should be retrofitted, they should be updated, insulation updated, heating units updated as much as possible, I think we should encourage that. The question is, do we have the infrastructure in the city to inspect and enforce that?
Starting off with the question about, am I in favor of adopting twenty one COVID zero two, whatever, the name was exactly, generally, yes, and I say, don't really say generally, and not just yes, it's because unlike Congress, I like to read things before I pass them. And so I'd like to read that, see what differences are between this and the twenty eighteen, but I frankly, can't really imagine that I wouldn't be in favor of adopting any goals that will stay current and stay up to date on best practices. As for interview efficiency requirements for rentals, I am one hundred percent in favor of that. Not only because of Uh, not only because the majority of our citizens are renters, but because renting is often the most affordable option for those uh, who don't have alternatives. Uh, not everybody has the privilege or benefit to buy a home, plan a buying home, or ever buy a home. Uh, and so we need to ensure within our city limits that our rental housing is up to the same standards of energy efficiency as we would expect from anything else. Uh, because otherwise, frankly, what we're doing is we are putting the burden of higher, uh, utility bills on those, uh, who often cannot afford that anyways. Uh, and so I don't think it's too much to ask, uh, for, uh, whether it's an individual or company, uh, renting out a, a home, uh, to bring that up to, uh, what I would, what I think see as reasonable energy efficiency standards. It benefits them in the value of their property and it benefits directly the person renting the homes.
Great. Question number eight, I'm going to ask Sophie from Climate Leaders Evans News, who's going to ask the last question. She will give two, two important announcements again.
Solid waste has been the source of major controversy over the past several years, with most of the attention focused on litter collection, to continue being them via trash bags on the curb, or whether we should switch to roll carts. Our concerns, however, are focused on waste minimization and the diversion of recyclable and compostable materials away from the landfill. Columbia has a diversion rate that is half the national average. It is generally accepted that, that an economic incentive can motivate residents to redirect waste away from the landfill, the landfill, and a pay-as-you-prove, P A Y T, system can be implemented with either trash bags or roll carts. The latter by charging a lot less for small roll carts than medium or large ones. While the recent attempts to implement a modified P A Y T system led to failure, many think that more could have been done in terms of public education. Many residents either did not understand the system or grasp why waste minimization and diversion are essential to addressing the climate crisis. Would you, if elected, support a system that provides an economic incentive to minimize and divert waste? And if so, how would you propose to do this? Also, would you support a major citywide educational campaign that would include three houses of worship, neighborhood associations, major employers, et cetera, as well as, as well as through an outreach effort at major events to aid in making residents aware of how the system works and why it's important? You have three minutes.
Thank you. I wholeheartedly agree that solid waste is an issue and that we're gonna, we're going to have to live with in some form regardless. Can we work to minimize it? Absolutely. We should. We should be doing whatever we can to minimize the solid waste that we have to have picked up weekly basis. Significant part of that's going to be education. How do we let people know what, some, you know, some options? One thing I've heard, uh, proposed is for at least food waste is backyard composting. Some people do that. Uh, and that's great. Uh, but even if they are doing that, there needs to be some education involved with that. Uh, for example, meat byproducts, maybe, maybe not, should go into your compost. Vegetable, sure, if you want to do that. But what do you do with that neighbor that wants to compost? But they're not maintaining it, they're throwing everything they can in it. It gets nasty, then slightly the garbage are picking at it every night. You know, that's something that uh, can probably be addressed with education, but maybe, maybe not. So how to regulate that? I think with a good bit of a, uh, education, uh, a strong education push will help that. I'm glad to see, I don't know how many of you remember, but when I first moved here twenty years ago, when it came to recycling, all, all of the one recycled was for plastic, was ones, twos, and then the last and cans. I'm glad to see it's been several years, but they finally expanded that, simply now that except for most plastics. Uh, as well as continuing the last hand and so on. The other thing is, I think, I think it's a little more accessible than it used to be, for people to find out just what is recyclable and what's not. Um, I would be curious to know, just from an educational standpoint, you know, what actually happens to the material that they have to be recycled, how much is, you know, recycled locally, shipped off, or is it, where, where does it actually go? So, but education is definitely important, and how we can minimize it, how we can uh, minimize what goes to the landfill. We're always going to have something going to the landfill. I don't care how efficient we attempt to be, there's always going to be something going through the landfill, so. Um, so we can definitely do that.
Uh, I'm, so I, I prepare these statements along with my spouse. Uh, I will cite her, uh, and, and I'm securing like Greg said, what Greg said, uh, but I have carrot and stick, that's why I wanted to say that. There's been some talk about what is a carrot and what is a stick? How do you, how do you motivate people, right? Uh, the carrot is an incentive, typically a financial incentive, and the stick is the penalty. Right? We must incentivize minimization and diversion of waste into reclamation, and that includes not just recycling, but also composting. The city needs to partner with the private sector and other stakeholders in the community to find the best way to reclaim our waste. A citywide education campaign, uh, that continues on just, uh, city and even county by, uh, an education. I'm not convinced that we need a rolling the mast off or something like that to, you know, come out to events, but there absolutely needs to be mechanics. You can't hold people to a house if they don't know how. So we have to teach them how, and we have a lot of educators here in our, probably many in this room. And I see the values of our citizens and our city every day. They want to reduce the amount of solid waste that ends up in the landfill. Recycling fell to seven and a half percent during the pandemic. So even in a pandemic, there were individuals that were willing to recycle, do the work that it takes, the extra work that it takes to recycle. They went out of their way. And by the end of twenty twenty-one, recycling, even with curbside recycling, only every other week, was back up to pre-pandemic baseline of fourteen percent. And that is close to where we wanted to be, which was fifteen percent by twenty first. We are just shy of that. So once we have, we have invested in fully staffed and efficient sanitation services, there's no reason why our city can't reach its goal for waste minimization and diversion back into what I call the reclamation state. Recycling.
Thank you. So we absolutely need to incentivize, uh, recycling, and not only that, but again, how do we mitigate and minimize the waste uh, that our citizens are reducing. Uh, but I think the fundamental thing here that, if I thought that it's perhaps the biggest impact is an education campaign, uh, a community meeting campaign, because with so many programs, so many initiatives and efforts, some of the city adds, or any government one, you have, doesn't matter how great it is, doesn't matter how fantastic and intensive it exists. Uh, it doesn't matter if it's about trash or if it's an efficiency program. People don't know about it, it might as well not exist. That they don't know how to use it, that they don't know, uh, how it works in case of, in case they are trash recycling programs. Then it is absolutely meaningless. Uh, and so we do, uh, need to have a robust campaign, certainly when we, uh, are trying to make this switch, uh, that is to some extent never ending, right? We're always going to have, we are a transient city, uh, thanks to the colleges and to the, uh, folks that we attract, and while we are another, people come and go, and so we need to always be educating uh, our citizens about the changes to our programs, the incentives, why it benefits them, whether it's economically or, uh, you know, in terms of our environment and our health. Uh, but again, if we, if we don't do that, then it doesn't matter how good our program is. It doesn't matter what we're doing, it doesn't matter if we're doing bags and roll carts. Uh, if people don't know about it, if they don't know what they should be doing, or should not be doing, or how things weren't, uh, that it's, that it doesn't even, doesn't, it doesn't exist, frankly.
Thank you, Nick. And at this point, what I'd like to do, this ends the formal part of our program. I'd like to invite everybody to stick around, you have a little time, to chat with each other and with the candidates. There's a ton of refreshments still sitting on that table over there, so I'd like to invite you to help get through all those cookies and chips and dips and good stuff. I'd also like to invite anybody, like, come onto a plate, put some more on it, and when you're done with the plate or done with the cups, there's a cardboard box under the table, dirty dishes and dirty cups. You can put stuff in there and take it back, piece of, and wash them there. I also want to mention that there's, uh, dark signs for breaking down, and I think some literature on the table here, if anybody wants to pick those up uh, before you leave, and there's some literature and some bumper stickers and things on the sign-in table doorway. If anybody didn't get a chance to sign in when you arrived, we'd invite you to do that now, and there's opportunities on those to put a check mark, we'd invite to be added to any of the mailing lists of the six co-sponsoring organizations. Uh, at this point, I'd really like to offer a round of applause for these candidates who came to answer our questions tonight. Need the thought you put into answering these questions, and we didn't answer all of them. Uh, just, you know, all the questions we had, we appreciate thinking about the issues and and back at this thing with you. Uh, if you're elected in the council chambers, uh, at city hall, there's this really important issues that are coming before us in the near future, and I think you're going to be in on that. Because one of the two of you are going to be in on that, you really hope you'll put climate and environment first. It really is critical, not just for our generation, but for our children, grandchildren, and those who come after us. So again, thanks, everyone. We have some refreshments, really. Hang out, visit, talk with each other, that's important. Again, thank you. I also want to thank Jan, who put together the Zoom for us. Uh, we had some stressful moments with technology, but I told you all worked out, I said.
That's right. Everything is fine, I think.
Thank you. I want to thank you, you guys, to make this space available to nonprofits like ours for an event like this. They've been very helpful. Uh, so thank them and thank all of you. Also thank the media who came after this. Hope you've got your story. Feel free to stick around and ask questions, though, candidates or any of the organizers. And thank you, great volunteers, who ask, ask the questions and help with other aspects of this setup and cleanup and uh, check in and all that good stuff. So thank you all, and have a very good night.